Let me see, let me see. Roll call members, please.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Herron, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Addington at large.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, we need to approve the agenda. Do we have anything to amend on the agenda? Something.
I don't have anything.
Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All fair and open said aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item to approve the minutes. Is everybody here for the meeting? Both committees are working with doing both at the same time. All right. Need a motion to approve the minutes as presented to you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Anto made a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Mr. Herron, second. All fair and open said aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is citizen's expression period. Read his short statement. Citizen's expression period upon the meeting. When anyone who wishes to address the board, our staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium. State your name, where you're from, in the county, and/or law organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, and we have one that has signed up, we have no particular order. We just ask that you take turns, speak your business. Any act will be considered acting closed. Citizen's expression. So with that, we are a citizen's expression. And Ms. Begley is here, I think. You will come as now. Good morning.
Good morning. How is everybody?
Markly well.
I'm Nina Begley, and I'm on the town council in Daganah, Virginia. And I'm here to ask for $1,000 for our Fourth of July event that we put on every year. This year, we're going to have water slides, face paintings, snow cones, cakewalk, bingo. And we're also going to have two bands. One's the Troubadours, and the other is Savage Outlaws. And we usually have a wonderful time and a good turnout. And we would appreciate it greatly. You all always have been supportive, and we'd appreciate it if you'd do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm back. And while I was wanting to be here so much, I'm Peggy Tice from Snowflake Road. I was here last week, but there wasn't nobody giving. But, good morning, back again. And I guess I'll be back. Try to keep, and I guess you wonder why I keep coming back. I want to make sure that we keep on the six-year plan. And hopefully, maybe get moved up on the six-year plan. And I guess, too, and to complain, I called VDOT for Dust and Bushes. I got a ticket number for the Dust, but it hadn't been filled yet. And that was on the 22nd of May. I couldn't, they wouldn't give me a ticket for the Bushes in the curves. And I did call, like I say, I called VDOT on the 22nd, and I called Terry Kilgore's office on the 22nd. And I do have good news that his secretary did get back with me Monday and said that Terry is working on it now. And I was telling him what I was wanting for him to try to do is to get us some money for the secondary roads. And if we couldn't get money to move some from the primary roads that didn't need work on to, but she said he was working on it. So I need y'all's help, too, to stay after Terry, because apparently, he's the only one that can get any done. That's what I've been told, too. So. And is there any way that we could get grant money?
I've never heard of getting grant money to do that stuff. It'd be a VDOT funding. I, as my assumption, that's why it would have to be, I don't owe any grant money that would do that.
Well, Tennessee, you know, gets grant money for roads. But can you check on that and see if?
We can.
Okay.
But Tennessee, they, the counties do their own road maintenance, too. Their own road works. Those, the state don't do it in Tennessee. The counties do it.
Mm-hmm.
So that's where they're different from us.
Okay. And let's see. I think that's all. And you'll see me next month. And y'all have to put that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. First time here. My name's Susan McGriff. I live in District One in Yumi. And I just have a question. It's not a complaint or anything. But I was reading over the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And I see that we do have some money from the American Rescue Recovery Plan, which is very exciting, I think, for business in our county. And I was just wondering if there's an explanation of how businesses do, can access that money, what the process is. I don't know if anybody can explain that now, but, you know, I'm interested in getting the word out, so appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning. My name's Jeff Arrington. I'm here.
We have two. We have it on the agenda.
I have, it's different than the agenda.
Okay, all right.
Sorry about that. So yeah, you're going to hear from me later on as well, sorry. But I'm here this morning for the citizen's expression period from Hiltons, Virginia, related, actually similar to the request you had earlier. I'm here on behalf of Hiltons Community Outreach, Hiltons Community Churches, and the Volunteer Fire Department in Hiltons, Virginia, requesting some funding for our Fourth of July event this year also. We've had really good turnouts the last two years, big events. Last year, we shot a little over 2,000 fireworks. It was about a 30-minute show. We do free hot dogs. The church provides all that. We've really tried the last few years to stay, not have to bother you guys requesting any funding. But we've been told this year by a lot of our folks to give donations, the economy's finally caught up to them. So we are coming before you guys this year, asking for perhaps maybe a $1,000 consideration to help out our fireworks. Last year, we budgeted, we were around $6,000 to $7,000 for the event. This year, we're going to be lucky to get about $3,000. We're going to make do with whatever we got. It's going to be a good event. But we did want to make the request to you guys, and hopefully, next year, the economy will recover, and we won't have to come back next year. But just wanted to come before you and place the request, so.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you for consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Come forward, folks. Good morning.
Good morning. I have a question about the budget.
Go ahead, state your name, where you're from, in the county.
Patricia Kilgore. I'm in District One.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. And I have a question about the budget, the new budget. There's some revenues, I noticed, that are coming from the casino, and there's been reports about. And I was just wondering, just a question, are the funds restricted to use in certain areas, portions of that? So you've got areas that you have to cover with that, as opposed to just being able to use it? Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I want specifically the digital radio. I couldn't figure out what that might be, so if you could give some explanation, I'd appreciate it, too. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Come forward. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Becky Coleman. I'm from Wollapah, District Two. And looking through the budget, the first thing I want to do is commend you guys. You have provided funding for small community-based organizations that really need it and that provide a service to Scott County and to their community. So that is great. And as I look through it, I see, like, I see Brain Injury, I see Feeding America, I see Gate City Frontier, Heart of Appalachia, Virginia War Memorial, I'm not sure where that's at. But I see, I see that, you know, $1,000 to $2,000 of funding for each of these, and I'm sure it means the world to them. But then I got two, one that really stumped me, and that's what I'm here to ask you about. And that is Spearhead Trails. Now, as a member of the Tobacco Commission, I watched Spearhead Trails come to us many times to ask for massive amounts of funding, much more than the $14,000 that you all have allocated. And that's a lot of money. But it's a very small amount of money for Spearhead Trails, that $14,000, very small, very small. So I'm just wondering why we have allocated so much more for Spearhead Trails than for other comparable projects? And whether, is there any kind of agreement that we have with Spearhead Trails, or any kind of, that the whole community, selfless community has, that requires that we provide this funding to them? But it seems a little bit out of line with the other funding that I had mentioned. So that's it, ma'am?
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? All right. If not, we will close citizen's expression period, and we'll address some of the things here that I took notes on. First thing was the Town of Dunnigan. Mr. Nina Begley was here requesting $1,000. We usually do that. So we need discussion here before the board. If not, we entertain a motion to approve. That'd be from our contingency fund. And so we'll put that in the motion, too. Are we okay in our contingency fund?
Yes.
Anyway, $1,000 from that fund to go to the Town of Dunnigan for the Fourth of July festivities. I'll plug that. It's a good event. It really is. And a lot of people come there. It's a big event we have in Dunnigan. So I do encourage people to come and enjoy that. It's a lot of festive type day. So I do encourage people to come with that. So with that, we entertain a motion to pay the $1,000 from our contingency fund. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we do $1,000 from our contingency fund.
Ms. Anto made a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay. Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All fair and open said aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is, Ms. Beg is here for the VDOT stuff. And something that you mentioned, moving money from the primary to secondary, that's something that I have advocated for a long time. Because I see money spent on primary roads that, in my humble opinion, shouldn't be spent. But they put that money in a pot, and they say they can't move it. So it's a general assembly thing, they'd have to do that. And I wish we could let us, let us have some say in that, but they don't. So hopefully, maybe that can happen somewhere down the road, they can move money around. And an example of that, and I even mentioned to the Secretary of Transportation about paving Route 72 between Fort Blackmore and Gate City. There wasn't a single pothole in it. And they chipped it up and repaved it. And I don't think that should have been done, but that's, but then they say it was preventive maintenance. Maybe it is. I don't know. But to pave the five lanes wide, you have two emergency lanes, three lanes in the middle, and to repave that, that could go a long way about paving a secondary road somewhere. But anyway, they put the money in those primary pots, primary roads, and they say they can't move it, so anyway, good discussion of it. Any other discussion here on that item?
I am seeing some positive things from VDOT. I rode around with them for about five hours the other day, looked at several different things. She mentioned something about the brush. He did say that they have, I think it's a contractor that's going to have some type of reach, like type bush hog, that's going to go on the roads. And he asked me, he asked me which, which roads? And I said, all of them. You know, I mean, 71, I'm sure there's places on 23 that need it. So, you know, that, but there have been some changes, and it seems to be positive, so.
Thank you, Mr. Jeter. The ARPA money to business, we have, I'll let Ms. Starr address that about the committee, and the ARPA committee is here that has made the decisions on that, which we have to approve. On that money that's used, and Ms. Starr, if you would, address that briefly, if you don't mind, and you're upon more than I am, if you would, please.
Sure. On the ARPA funding, even though in the budget, it shows we have $2 million, that's actually what's in bank. That has been delegated to projects that will be completed before the end of fiscal year 20, well, calendar year '24, those projects will be finished. We have about $126,000 that's not been obligated out of that $2 million. So that's how it's been spent. We have a building in town that's going to be renovated for a Commonwealth Attorney's Office that's going to be moving into that to free up space in the courthouse. And the thinking on that project, we're investing in that space instead of doing a $30 million courthouse expansion, because the courthouse offices are completely out of rent. So that was the thinking behind doing the project in town with the building. But we have other things that's obligated, that's in the process as well. We have purchased a new software for the county that's across all departments, finance, accounting, building inspector, treasurer, commissioner of revenue, that we are in implementation stages for. So that's coming out of that ARPA funding as we get billing in progression. So does that answer your question on that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a good question. People need to know where that money's going. It's taxpayers' money. And I think people need to ask more questions. If you don't, they'll ask, because it's important that we do that.
Can I add something?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a ARPA committee for, specifically for looking at requests for that money. So what we do is we meet whenever we have requests from one of the county offices or somebody in the county for that. And then we, we as a group, decide whether or not that falls within that, within that category, that we can, where we can use that money for that, so that we're, so that we're all transparent with that spending, because we want to be as, you know, open as we can with that and fair about that.
All right. Mr. Arrington was here from the Hiltons area, requests funding for their Fourth of July festivities, $1,000. Do we have any discussion or a motion?
Mr. Jeter, I make the motion to approve $1,000 for the Hilton Fire Department.
Okay.
I'll stake it then.
All right. Mr. Tipton made a motion. Mr. Bricky, second. Any other discussion? That come from our contingency fund, correct?
I just have one comment. He said in the motion for Hilton's Fire Department.
All right.
Ms. Arrington, how would that need to be? Who would the check need to be wrote to?
Anybody else, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? That from our contingency fund, correct? From our contingency fund?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. All fair and open said aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Who's this?
Mr. Bricky. Next item is, Ms. Kilgore's here on the budget, the $600,000 from the, that's the casino money that we're getting. And the digital radio stuff, I'll briefly discuss that. What that is, it's going digital, get away from analog system, where the problem we have with EMS and with our sheriff's office, everybody's having communication issues all through the county. This is going to fix that. And also, it's going to make it more secure, where people can't hack into the conversation and hear where the, where the law enforcement is. So it's a big enhancement. It's $1.2 million, what that's going to cost. And we're financing that to pay for it, and, but it's important. We do, all the counties will be going to that eventually. I know Scanner Food hates it, because if you look on Facebook, they have that, and they can, and they will, I like Scanner Food. I do, I keep up with it. But they won't be able to do that. And a lot of law enforcement don't like Scanner Food, because they learn from people what's going on, and things that you really shouldn't know. But anyway, that's what that is. As far as the amount, the casino money that we're getting, it's been allocated. There is three areas, like you said, that we can spend it on. Ms. Starr, if you want to brief it, I don't have it right there in front of me, about the ARPA money for the casino money.
We should be receiving approximately $600,000. That's our proceeds. It's been accumulating since the casino's been open. We'll get a distribution once a year in August that's looking to be about $600,000. So what's budgeted is the debt service for that digital communication system. That'll be about $179,000. Firing range upgrades, that's a capital improvement project for the sheriff's office. They have a firing range up next to our landfill, and it is, we've got water runoff that's creating some ditches and some hazards there for them. So we're going to do some grade work there, and some tile work, to get those issues fixed for their safety. And under education, we're going to do $43,000 to the MECC Promise Program. And that program provides free college education for all Scott County resident students that will be attending Mountain Empire College. And they are recent high school graduates, so they'll not have to pay to go to Mountain Empire with the county putting in this money in the promise program. And then we're going to use $342,965 of that money as a match portion of what we have to pay for Scott County schools required by the state, so that freed up other monies in our budget, so that we could balance the budget this year without having to take from our contingency fund. So that's the plan for the $600,000.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item was on Spearhead Trails. Ms. Coleman mentioned the $14,000. The other counties, what, they request the price, that wasn't it? What did they?
They always request $28,000. And if you pay their contribution of $28,000, then your residents get the permit sticker that you have to have to use the Spearhead Trail system at half price. Where we don't have the land, the abandoned mine land that's been reclaimed for the ATV trails, we've never contributed the $28,000. In the past several years since I've been here, we've done the $14,000. So their request was double what we do fund.
So that's, and the reason is more than the others, because of the contribution that these trails have made to the economy here in the county. And so hopefully, we can get ATV trails one day, but probably not in federal land. You're not allowed to have ATVs on federal land, so we have a lot of them in our boroughs, which it would also pertain to. Anything else on citizen's expression, any of you folks? This expression period being one of the best if. Y'all have asked questions, need to be asked.
Yes.
And people need to come and ask, where is my tax dollars going? Do you ask for a copy of the budget? And I'm glad, and Ms. Kilgore, she asked me about that, and we sent it to her, or had freedom to do that. People need to ask questions. Where's my money going? What's it been used for? It's your money, and we're spending it the best we know how, and being as efficient as we can with it. We don't always find things like we'd like to, we're letting them do what we can do. So anyway, and I, it has been a good citizen's expression period. We give a little bit of money out to the communities, which is a good thing. So anyway, I'm just, I'm glad y'all are here for that. So very, very good citizen's expression period. All right. And thanks for, we go to the next item. All right. Next item is a public hearing to amend the Scott County fiscal year 2023 budget. Amendments include an increase in fines to the school operating fund totaling $7,205,610. And county departments increases totaling $164,603. Revenue collection increased by $1,306,519. With that, we'll have the public hearing on this budget. We'll close the public hearing, and we'll need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Mr. Bricky, second. Any discussion? All fair and open said aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item, we won't be voting on it, but it's a public hearing on the proposed budget and tax levy for Scott County for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023. This public hearing is now open. No one wants to speak? We will close it, and we will vote on this on June 28th. We'll be back here in two weeks to do the final budget approval, and then we'll be back to do the vote. Next item is a Baker Tilly Sour Study. And Ms. Kent was here, I think, she made it from the airport.
Yes.
Somebody said you had trouble getting out of Dallas.
I was in San Antonio.
Huh?
This is my third council meeting in three days.
Oh, okay. Thank you for coming.
Well, I'm happy to be here. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
You have a copy of the study in your packets.
Well, my name is Jayne Kent. I'm the practice leader over our compensation consulting team. We work exclusively with local government, so that's all my team does. You all worked very closely with Sarah Towne, who's a senior consultant on our team. But I'm the lucky one with the big airport and direct flights, so that's why I'm here. I want to go over the methodology we use for doing studies like this, to kind of give you a framework of how we went about the project, and then highlight some of the major themes, like the internal equity, the external equity, how we use those results from both of those phases in the pay plan development, and then our recommendations based on those results. Okay, so our process follows these five major phases. We started by getting to know the county, what's your current situation. We asked for a lot of documentation, like your org charts, pay policies, what positions exist, what are those positions doing, your job descriptions, et cetera, just to understand what positions you have, what are they doing, and get a sense of where the county kind of stands with its current compensation plan. We use those job descriptions then to do an internal review of your positions, looking at titles, looking at job evaluation, which I'll get into each of these a little bit more. Then we also use those job descriptions to verify matches in the market. So we went out to peer organizations, collected base pay information, and then taking the results from those two major phases into the pay plan development to kind of guide how we built the pay plan, how we plugged positions into that. And then here we are in this final phase, just wrapping things up and putting a bow on it, handing it over for you all to carry forward. So I'll tell you a little bit more about our job evaluation system. It's a point factor system that was developed specifically to measure local government jobs. And it does so with these nine factors that you can see in this table, things like, what's the education and experience requirement of a job? What's the level of work performed? Are they supervising others? If so, how many? Physical demands, working conditions. So those folks who have to work outside in dangerous conditions, or just, you know, disagreeable conditions, rather, they're getting credit for that when we're looking at, you know, a measuring stick across the entire county. How do these jobs kind of measure against each other? Being a point factor system, the end result of this process is a total score for every job, and that's how we establish that hierarchy of jobs, based on the relative internal value of those positions. So that's really the framework of how we've established the hierarchy of positions. And then with the market, we just kind of plug those magic numbers into that, and then that kind of drives us into the pay plan. So for the market assessment, we worked with the county to come up with a list of peer organizations. And those are organizations you compete with, but also compare to. So who do you lose employees to, gain them from, but who looks like you and works like you? So same size, same services, to make sure we get good matches for those positions. For the private sector piece of the puzzle, we use three published salary survey sources, the Bureau of Labor Statistics, Economic Research Institute, and Comp Analysts. Plugging data in from those three surveys acts like the private sector in the data set. Benchmark positions, that's just a commonly, like an administrative assistant that exists across industries. So we wanted to focus on positions we knew we'd get hits on. In this case, we included all positions in the survey, though. Adjustments that we made once we collected the data, for work week as an example, if an organization has a 37.5-hour work week versus a 40-hour, we just want to make sure we're looking at the correct hourly wage before we plug in that annual wage. A cost of labor differential was also applied. It's not the same as cost of living and I'll get into that a little bit more on the next slide. For quality control, I'll point out, we do not weight the data, so no care was treated more importantly, more importantly than another. If it's a good match, it was plugged in and treated like a good match. And a good match is a 75% overlap in those duties and responsibilities. So we're not just matching to the title and hoping we're getting, getting lucky like a project manager in the engineering or IT or anything else. Um, we're actually matching to the position. And then we also required at least three matches per position before we would calculate that market value so that it's not just the quality, but the quantity to be able to say this is market value for this job. So those peer organizations, these are the 10 that were identified and this list was approved by the board in February and we were able to compile data from eight of these. You'll see the eight in bold. Looks like the two we didn't get was Russell and Lee. Um, the last three are those published sources that we use to represent the private sector. So it looks like we had a pretty good turnout of data on this one. And then here's a little bit more about the cost of labor differentials we use. So this is not cost of living, like why eggs are more expensive when you go to the store, but rather this is what the prevailing wage is for a given job. And taking that regional influence out of the equation to drill down to what is the value of this job. So that top line, you can see, um, we use cost of labor, uh, kind of a mixture of Big Stone Gap, uh, because I don't believe Gate City was in the system. The data is taken from the Economic Research Institute's geographic assessor tool, which is taken from Bureau of Labor Statistics. So sometimes not all localities will be in the system and it will give us a zip code to kind of search the closest nearest comparable city. So 86.5 is the cost of labor for, uh, for Gate City for the county that we used. Um, and that's on a scale out of 100, 100 being the US average. So we took that number for all of the localities where we had data and then the difference to Big Stone Gap. So as an example, that top one for Bristol, Tennessee, they're about 88.4. So we adjusted their data down 1.9 and that's just taking that kind of regional influence out and getting down to what's the wage, um, for the work that's being done there. So if you see a negative number on that far right column, that means their data was adjusted down. A positive number means it was adjusted up just to kind of get everything even. I'll pause there. Is there any, that one's usually a doozy. If anybody has any questions on that one?
Makes sense.
Okay. Good. All right. So overall from the market, uh, all 35 positions were included in the survey. None had insufficient data. We were able to get at least three matches for every position. That means we were able to calculate market value for each of those positions as well. So we prepared an aggregate, uh, average minimum, midpoint and maximum for each of those, uh, based on the number of matches and then also a comparison to the actual salaries and the market average midpoint. We focus on the market average midpoint because it's commonly observed to be the market, quote unquote. So just kind of looking at where you stand relative to the market. And then some thresholds above and below, looking 5% below, 5% above, to have that conversation about where do you want to align yourself? Do you want to lead the market? Do you want to lag? Do you want to be at market? And so considering this information, ultimately we decided to report the line in the county at market and that plays itself out when we get into the pay plans. Uh, but first here's, uh, the market results. Really tiny numbers on the screen. Um, so that first column of numbers is how many matches. So that first position as an example, the animal control officer, we had seven matches for that position. So that minimum, maximum and midpoint are an average of those seven matches. And then this is a, uh, the report doing the comparison. So that same information, you have the animal control officer's current salary and then that's being compared to, um, the market average midpoint in the middle. And then we've got that 5% below and 5% ahead of market just to kind of look, what does that look like? Where do we stand? And so you see this kind of salt and pepper of red and blue and that's really common because positions will move at a different pace in the market than each other. So by building this pay plan, we're able to really kind of tailor the results to what's happening with each position. Instead of just saying on average down here, it says 14%, instead of just saying, okay, everybody gets 14%. That's not going to fix some of what's happening right here. So, um, the pay plan option I think is going to get you the tailored results that you need. So getting into pay plan discussions, uh, the county currently does not have a formal pay plan that's defining grades and pay ranges. Um, just a list of positions and kind of starting minimums. So we've prepared a formal pay plan that has the grades, positions are assigned to it. All 35 positions will be on a single pay plan and the midpoint represents that 100% of market. So, um, as positions start and then employees kind of move through their pay range, about the time they hit their midpoint, their market, they should be fully proficient in their role. That's kind of the best practice of, um, moving employees through their range. So, um, this table on the left is the pay plan. There is 16 grades. This is an open range pay plan. That means from the minimum to the maximum, it's open. There's not defined steps in between. We've got range spreads of 30% to 40%. That's the distance from minimum to maximum. You see it more narrow on those first few grades because those are probably, uh, the, those are the positions in the county that have a smaller learning curve. So employees in those grades are going to get to their midpoint, which is their market value, faster than the ones further down. Those jobs have a longer learning curve. It takes longer to get to the midpoint. The midpoint differential is going to be the distance from each grade at the, at the midpoint. So you can kind of see how that stair step works. Um, it gives us, gives you kind of like that sweet spot of when someone promotes into the next grade, it's not going to break the budget, but also just enough overlap and not overlap to incentivize folks to move up, take on more responsibility. Otherwise, if they can make the same amount not doing that, they won't. So you've got to find that good little sweet spot. So again, I'll point out that this midpoint is what we're, is representing the market for each of the grades. Positions were assigned to this pay plan based on the internal job evaluation scores and the market average midpoints. And then a couple of notes at the bottom here, the starting minimum wage is 1338 and, and the comment, and what it is in Virginia is $12. So this pay plan is going to get you ahead of the mark. Here's more math to just demonstrate what we've done. Um, each of these dots represents a position and it's on the bottom, you've got the job evaluation score. On the left side, you've got the market average midpoint. So that's where each of those magic numbers kind of, um, correspond on that chart. The dark line is the regression through all the dots and then those other lines is the pay plan. So we use the regression to help us find outliers. If there's positions that are really high in market and really low internally, we just want to make sure, is there something going on? Or, um, if we need to make, you know, fix the data, maybe we've got an error, like somebody gave us the wrong market data or something, it'll, it'll help us kind of go back and check that. But this also helps us see that the pay plan we've built fits on the natural distribution of your jobs. So that regression line being right on top of that proposed midpoint means that we've built a pay plan that's going to accommodate the positions you have. So here are the grade assignments. These were prepared, as I mentioned, using total job evaluation scores and market average midpoints, um, to get a position assigned to the, a grade in the pay plan. So for an example, if the market data said 45,000, then it would go to the grade whose midpoint is as close to that number as possible. That may mean it's a little bit above, a little bit below, but as close to that, that number as possible. Um, market though, I'll emphasize, was not the only driver. So, I mean, market tends to be more private sector leaning and there's some jobs in local government that just are not valued in the market. So sometimes job evaluation gets it where it needs to be. Um, so we did look at both of those to make sure we had appropriate groupings. So the positions that you'll see in each grade should be similar nature in level of work. It makes sense that they have the same pay range. So from there, having those gray assignments, then we plugged the people into the equation, looking at what's their existing pay relative to those new pay ranges? How do we at least get people onto the pay plan so you can adopt it? What are some different options in terms of maybe an across-the-board adjustment? Maybe a years of service adjustment? So I have four scenarios that we've calculated for your consideration. The first one is just looking at whose salary is below their new minimum and at least moving them to that minimum so everyone's on the pay plan. Everyone else would retain their existing salary. It's just impacting, in this example, you have 48 employees, 20 have a salary below their minimum, so it's only moving those 20 employees. Um, so this would be like the bare minimum implementation just to get the pay plans in place. The next option is looking at, uh, movement to minimum or a 5% adjustment. So if for some of those 20 individuals who need to move to minimum, if it resulted in less than 5%, they would instead get 5% so that no one is getting less than 5% of this, um, scenario. So those 24 who are already within range also receive that 5% adjustment. The four that you see who have a salary above their max, um, are excluded from these calculations. It's our recommendation, you just right circle them until the market catches up. We don't recommend taking pay away from anyone. I'll say that. So option three is looking at years of service. So starting everyone at the minimum and then moving 0.25% through the range for every year of service with the county, um, and just kind of seeing where they fall as a, as a way to decide, are people appropriately placed in their new pay range? And so that is, uh, we've got the average years of service is 12 with the county. This was capped at 20 years. So if you have 21 years, you're only going to get 0.25% for 20 years. And then this last, last option is combining option two and three. It's doing the 5% adjustment and then the years of service adjustment. So at the very least, everyone should get at least 5% and then whatever the years of service adjustment is on top of that. So, um, looking at this example, there's 48 employees, 20 are below, 24 are within. It would be 174,000 about to adopt the pay plans with this, uh, scenario. And so with that, um, our recommendation is to adopt everything we did. Um, the, you know, any changes to classifications, um, the pay plans, the grade assignments, picking an implementation scenario that's going to help you achieve your compensation philosophy, your business needs, but one that's fiscally sustainable. My biggest recommendation is this last one, continue efforts like these to update and maintain your class and comp system. So a recalibration like this may be five to seven years. And then annually, uh, doing general increases to move employees through those range, but also a market adjustment so that the pay structure itself is moving. So your minimums stay competitive each year. And then, you know, looking at job descriptions as jobs become open so that those are staying updated as well. Uh, last, I think, I believe we've delivered the final report, but after that, we're handing everything else over, doing the training with whomever is going to get the joy of maintaining the process. So the job evaluation system can be used to maintain this going forward. As you have new jobs or jobs change, you can evaluate it and then see what grade it should be in with to everyone else. So happy to answer any questions.
You may have any questions. Good report. Very informative. All right. Anyone, anything? Thank you.
Well, all right.
Glad you made it.
We have. Thank you. Thank you.
All righty. Next item is item 10 on the, uh, planning district one update and performance contract. Ms. Kim Howe.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have some annual reports here for you all.
All right.
Just being up for everybody, just take one, pass it around, keep any extras. Thank you for having me. My name is Kim Howe and I'm the financial officer for Planning District One Behavioral Health Services. And I'd just like to come out and let all the localities know, which are the counties of Scott Lee, Wise and the city of Norton, know what we've been up to, um, over the years since you all are so kind to, um, help fund our, our services. So what I want to do is just take a couple of minutes and what I've passed out is the annual report, but what we're going to look at is the last page on page eight. Um, I do encourage you to take the time to read. There's a lot of good stories in there. Um, but what I want to do is look at the services that were provided and how many people, how many of our neighbors and our communities were affected by this. Um, so if you look on page eight, you'll see that there were 4,481 individuals served in, um, Ketchikan area for a planning district one. And they were served with one or more of the services listed at the top of the page. But in addition to that, there were an additional 6,763 individuals who were at least touched through some sort of, um, community-based prevention event that happened. And so, and the prevention is, is geared towards all ages. Now, it used to be more towards, um, just adults, but now we've brought kids into that. Um, and it's a good thing because if you look over here, you could see that nearly a third of all the individuals who were served were under the age of 18. So, um, and we are, um, in Lee County, we are in the schools helping to provide some of those services so that the children have more, um, access to those services. We're doing them right in the school so there's no transportation, no parents having to miss work, that kind of stuff. And, um, we'd love to broaden that out to the other communities. And also, um, and we do all this in partnership with Frontier Health. They're the ones who are out there in the communities that have an outpatient site in every, um, county. Um, but also with that, in partnership with Frontier Health, we were able to provide 219 jobs within our communities. Um, so that's great. We still have, um, some staff shortages and that's just, you know, a problem it seems to be, um, not only locally, but nationally as well. But we have taken steps to not only recruit new employees, but retain the great ones that we already have. Um, and these steps include we've implemented over the past couple of year, years, higher base wages and along with other employee incentives such as leadership training and more flexibility in work schedules. And there's indication that these incentives are working because our retention of employees has increased since 2021. So that's great. Um, and also due to the continued support of our local governments, which includes Scott County, we are able to grow and add new facilities and add new services. And one of the new services that, um, y'all might've kind of heard about, but it's going to be, um, nationally pushed out as of July 1st is the new crisis 988 number. So anybody who's in any kind of mental health or substance use crisis, can just pick up the phone, call 988. It's much like the 911 for medical emergencies and it'll go directly to a call center and they will dispatch the appropriate services for the crisis that you're having. There are two call services, crisis call centers that are approved in Virginia and, um, our partner Frontier Health has one of those. So if you call from Scott County, odds are you're going to call to the local crisis call center and they, they know what we have and what the geographical, you know, region is. They just know all those details. So there's some comfort there, knowing that you're going to be right here. And they also back up statewide because the phone can only ring so many times before somebody has to answer it. So there is a small chance it would be outside, but odds are you're going to get somebody who, who answered that phone that's sitting somewhere in the, in the geographical area here. And there'll be, um, commercials and radio spots and everything going for that as of July 1st. We've been running the call center. Uh, we've had it up and going for just about the whole fiscal year 23, so since last summer. Um, and we've got the kinks worked out and, uh, we're ready and, um, we're actually expanding it because we think that there will be, um, an influx in calls when the word gets out to everybody on a regular basis. That's all I have, nice and sweet and short. And any questions from you all?
You said that number was 988?
988.
I, I had never heard that before a while, but I had known.
Well, they were going to put it out last year, but then they decided nationally that not everything was set up. So they've pushed it back a year. So it's kind of out there, but it's kind of not out there. But it's supposed to start July 1st with the national advertising.
So if you call, uh, 911, like locally, would they contact the 988 number for a, uh, an appropriate?
That's, that's a, uh, county by county thing. They have something called a Marcus Alert where the two kind of merge. Um, and so that's a county by county thing. If you are part of the Marcus Alert, that could happen. If you're not, I'm not saying it wouldn't happen. Um, our hope is that as this all comes out and gets going, those would merge together and they would know, you know, hey, let me push you over here to 988 and get you set up with those resources.
Well, that's good.
Any other questions?
Good presentation.
Thank you. And then, um, y'all also have the performance contract. I saw that listed. So I didn't know if y'all had any questions, um, on that as well. All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
We need to approve it. Or we need a motion to approve the performance contract. Have we had a chance to look at it? Do we have a motion to approve?
No move.
Mr. Duda made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's for the second. Any discussion? All three of us saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unless you carry it. Next item, Mr. Burke was here, the superintendent from Scott County Schools. How you doing today?
Good. How was everyone today? Got a beautiful day outside. Here to ask again, we do this each and every year to ask, request a line of credit with Scott County School System for the 2023-24 school year. Effective, uh, beginning July 1st of this year and concluding July, excuse me, June 30th of 2024 in the amount of $4 million. And as the treasurer's office go out and seek the necessary, uh, requirements in that regard.
The school board does that to help us out through, over the plan for taxes start. They should be in with them, but it lets them operate and don't, uh, you know, doesn't cause a lot of hardship for the county between July 1st and, uh, when the taxes starts coming in. So it is a good thing for the county. It, it was costing about 38,000 to do that. Has that gone up since interest rates have gone up? I don't know if it's, 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 you'll find out when she goes out for it.
It, uh, it varies and of course how much is, is utilized. The percentage rate has increased just a little to what it was. But, uh, this year alone, we were able to pay it off fairly quick. So, uh, I won't say it was, it was right at 30, a little less than 30,000. So.
All righty. Importantly, do this. So entertain a motion to allow this line of credit to happen for the school board. Do we have a motion?
Make that motion and we approve this school's line of credit.
Mr. Bricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bricky, second. Any discussion?
The treasurer, the director.
Yes.
Yes. Director, treasurer.
You have a motion, second. Any discussion? All three of us saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carry. All right.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Arington's here, item 12. He'll come back if you would, sir. Welcome back.
Thank you all again. Um, I'm now in front of you on behalf of the VA 250 Committee. Uh, this was a committee that you guys approved unanimously in December of last year. Um, the committee is together and we're working on trying to build excitement and tourism opportunities and community activities and excitement around our 250th anniversary of our nation coming up in 2026. So this is a federal level program that's been pushed down to the states and then of course to the counties. Um, we've assembled a team. We've got a good team together. We've had several meetings. Um, I'm glad to report that things, a lot of ideas are coming together. There's a lot of real excitement building about this. Um, we've got a lot of ideas. We've got a lot of ideas. We've put together roadmaps and some visions and some vision statements. But to achieve what we're going to want to be able to achieve, we're going to need some financial support. And so that's what brings me before you all today. Cutting straight to the chase, just to throw it out there, the amount we're requesting from you is $10,000. I can tell you that we've roughly thumbed together a rough budget, and it's over $20,000 if we were to try to achieve all the items that we have on our list. One of the reasons we're specifically asking $10,000 from the board here is we are also seeking grant money through the VA 250 program. It's a little bit different than grants that have been available to the county in the past, in that this grant is a one-for-one match, a maximum grant amount of $10,000. So we hope that through your approval, if we can get the $10,000 from the county, we could also potentially get $10,000 in lock to the grant, which would give us $20,000, of course. So that's what brings me here today, is requesting those funds. To give you an idea of some of the kinds of activities we're looking at doing, you know, obviously, we've got the 4th of July parade coming up. We're going to be participating in that, doing some giveaways, having a float in that. If we can pull together what we threw out in a couple of emails last night, I think it'll be exciting. It'll probably be a first time for the Gate City Parade with what we have maybe leaving the parade. We'll see how that transpires. We've got an event coming up later in the year for the Boston Tea Party. We'll be working with Gate City Frontier on that also. We did recently incorporate and have a stand at the Jeep Jamboree that they had in Gate City. While I'm on here, and I hope maybe some people online are watching too, and if any of you all from different districts would like to maybe find somebody in your areas to participate in the VA 250 Committee, we certainly are still looking for more volunteers. We have pretty strong representation, I think, from the Gate City area. I'm from Hilton, so I think the Hiltons area has some pretty good representation. But we don't have as much from areas over in maybe Dungan, Duffield, or other parts of the county. We'd love to have some more folks get involved if they could, so I want to throw that out there as well while I have your attention. So Pam, we work, of course, with Pam on tourism. She's an integral part. You all know how integral she is to tourism in the county. And we hope that our efforts will continue to build that. And as we build this through 2026, of course, we will continue to report back to you guys. We want to build some legacy projects. We've got some legacy projects in mind. I'm not going to go into those right now, but those, the legacy projects will be things that will last beyond 2026. So this investment is not just an investment that will see recoup hopefully in tourism dollars and visitation and improve lives for the community members going down to 2026, but will actually continue on past that as our goal. So Pam, is there anything I forgot?
Well, I just want, I would just like to add that this is a totally community-driven committee, and I need to thank Mr. Arrington for his leadership. I mean, he is phenomenal. If, you know, if I had not had him, if he had not stepped forward and said, oh, I really want to do this. I'm really interested in doing this, I probably would have just done my hands up and said, ugh, that's too hard. But the committee has come up with some absolutely wonderful ideas, and last night I was so excited that I went home and I couldn't go to sleep. So, you know, I think if we can pull everything off, I think, I think people will just be amazed. And, you know, it's just, it is to, you know, mark our heritage too. You know, our goal is to create legacy projects that complement what we have achieved in Scott County in the last 250 years. So they're doing a great job, and I really thank him.
Well, I want to build on what Pam said too. It's the whole team, and in fact, just to the folks that would maybe ask, why the $10,000? Why money's being spent? Obviously, a lot of questions around taxpayers' money. For you that know me, you know I hold very near and dear making sure that people understand where money is going and that it's being spent responsibly. Just to start off on that, one of the early expenses that we were kind of anticipating was going to be around marketing and branding. And as you guys know, you've done events like this before. You know that's a big part of a budget. It's still part of our budget. But instead of having to try to find a contractor that we're going to have to maybe pay, we found, we were able to seek out some volunteers and found some very qualified individuals. We've got a three-team committee that's leading up our branding and marketing strategy, folks that have master's degrees, so they volunteered. So, well, I say that to say that the money we're getting, we are going to use it as absolutely where it is most valuable and only where it's necessary, of course. We want to make sure that it's spent responsibly. And where we can find volunteers or get donations, we will certainly take advantage of those opportunities and capitalize on those. So, any questions?
Any questions? When do you need this money?
So the grant period ends July 18th. And I apologize. That's a great question. It opened on May 18th, and it ends July 18th. So in order to try to have this money available to try to get the matching grant, we would have to have that before we submit that grant. We're going to target, we're targeting the end of June to try to have that grant completed, but realistically, it would probably carry into the 1st of July before we would actually get that submitted, so as soon as possible.
The only thing I see wrong with this, it should have gone through the budget process this amount this much, and I don't know what we can do. We're at the end of the budget calculations and everything, approving everything. So that amount, I mean, your thoughts, Mr. Starbuck, this week, you need to go through the budget process, I would think.
Either that, or you could use contingency if it's something the whole board wanted to do, to put that money out there for them. You have that left, and this is your last meeting of the year.
Could we do it June 28th? Would that be too late?
That would work. We can get it by then. If we can have that in, we can have all the paperwork.
We need to discuss it more, get, you know, make sure because it's a lot.
It is a lot.
It needs to be in the budget process, and we haven't done that.
Yep.
So anyway, your all stops on this, and I'm too far left field. Your all stops, or Mr. Starbuck.
I think we need to check into it. Let me, let me ask you, while you're here, have you had any contact from surrounding counties about regional efforts? And the reason I ask that, we were at a meeting, Spearhead Trails on High Mall, Jack Clannahan from Wise County was there, and he's already been down into Tennessee looking at something they do along the lines of having a marathon through the Daniel Boone Trail.
Yes. We've talked, we've talked, we've talked with Jack Mack. Lee County, at this point in time, has not come on board as a VA 250 county. So they, I mean, you know, we'll work with them, but part of, you know, part of that, part of that race goes into Lee County. We've talked, we've met with Dr. Plinger. He's explained all of that. But I do want to, I do need to clarify why this request came in so late. The grant just opened, and I did not know that it would be a one-to-one match because we haven't, those $10,000 grants have not been having to have a match, but they are now. And then the ones that I'm seeing subsequently, everything is having to have a match. And also, I mean, we're having to pretty much show dollar for dollar how we're using our matching funds this time, where they've not done that before. The folks who worked in the grants program, they've all left BTC, so there are new folks in there, and the guidelines are much, much more stringent than what they had been before. Normally, with those $10,000 grants, we could apply for them, and you didn't have to have matching grants. When we did the Love Project, Virginia's for Lovers, you know, the 50th Year Anniversary, we didn't have to have matching monies for that. You know, the MLP grants, we've always had to have matching funds, but I honestly was kind of surprised that we had to have some matching funds for this one. So that's as much my fault as it is anything, so.
What happens if you get the $10,000 from the county and then your grant don't come through?
Then we're going to have to be figuring out where we can make it, cut back on whatever plans we may have, cut back on budgetary items. It'd be the standard expense roll-offs. If you look at something and say, we're not going to be able to do the things that we're planning on doing. We would prioritize and just simply cut certain events.
Is that very competitive?
It is.
Yes.
So there's no guarantee. That is very true. Good point.
The first, the first round ended, I think, last year, and we had not, we had not gotten their designation by that point. And I think only three counties received funds for that. I can go back in and look at the VA 250, and I don't know. There, but there are several counties since that have come online that are VA 250 communities. So it will be, yeah, it is a competitive grant.
And to be able to, Mr. Ricky, what you were asking too, we have reached out to, I believe, Russell, so Russell County House, a committee.
And they're bottom line.
And there's one in Kentucky as well?
Kentucky, yes.
The Kentucky 250.
Tennessee is not doing, they're not doing a 250 celebration, to my knowledge. I've talked with the archivists. I am going to speak with folks at Neville and Inn because when we get to 1775, I mean, that's when Daniel Boone, you know, did the Wilderness Trail. So we want to work with the Neville and Inn Association because that's where it started. It started at Long Island of the Holston. And the first, the first 4th of July celebration was at Fort Patrick Henry, which was there at Long Island of the Holston, but they are not, when I, the last I spoke with them, Tennessee is not participating in the 250.
If you do not get the grant, I'm sure you've talked about going out to clubs and organizations and individuals for money for, to carry ahead with this. I think this will be great when it, when it happens, so.
We need a way, if they do donations though, for, I can't accept donations. We have to have a 501(c)(3) for that to run through.
Does organizations can?
The VA 250, we don't have one.
We don't have one.
The VA 250 is not. So we, we've talked about that in our last meeting. You know, we thought, can that come through another, you know, Gate City Frontier group or another group that we partner with to maybe make that happen? We don't know for sure. We may have those conversations.
John left. EDA, do they have a, they have a foundation? They have a, I know Cove Ridge, Cove Ridge Foundation, Cove Ridge has a foundation. I know, we could probably run it through the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association because we are working with them a lot. We did do an event with them when they did the opening of the library. So we could probably run, if we get donations, we could probably run that through them. Keith, my husband, happens to be the president of the association this, right now, this year, and we, and he's on this committee. So, and we've been working with them, so.
We are, we are behind the gun, as Pam pointed out. You know, this, at federal level, it started last year. Of course, we didn't get commissioned until December of last year. So for other, some of the northern counties, for instance, they've been doing things for a while. They've got a lot of events going on. So if you hear us talking, it sounds like we're behind. We are. We realize we're behind the gun. So we're quickly trying to catch up and trying to move forward as fast as we possibly can to get this established here in southwest Virginia. So part of that comes with that partnership with other areas. Even if, for instance, Lee County does not end up having a VA 250 committee, you know, if we do a marathon, or a march, or a drive, or whatever else, that is so many of our, you know, revolutionary period activities took place in multiple counties, we'll still work with those counties here. We can make sure the event's successful, that, you know, drives tourism and activities in Scott County, of course, as well.
You said that the majority would go toward marketing. Is that what you did?
I've got a list of just a rough budget that we threw together. It's mostly marketing on the end.
Bring it to us, or get to us on June 28th. We'll look at it. We'll see where it's going to go and what's going to happen with it. Is there anybody, does anybody receive a salary from, is there anybody volunteer?
There is 100% volunteer. Yeah, the funds, anything that goes into it would go right back in directly being used for the expense items. No salaries, all volunteers.
That's why I thought, want to make sure everybody hear that. I knew that, but I want everybody to hear that, that's, there's nobody drawing a salary from it.
No.
One, one thing too is, for a lot of what we're doing, we need period costumes, so, and we need, some of the folks that do these things, like Pam Eddy from, she was a ranger at Cumberland Gap, she does a tea party. She does a real Boston Tea Party. She has the tea. She has everything. And we are working with her to perhaps do that September 23rd, when they do the Harvest Moon Celebration, and a real Boston Tea Party. And so she does charge for that. So, you know, there's some things that, yeah, some of these folks do want to be paid for. I think probably the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association, you have to have two partners on this grant. They will be a partner. So, and Gate City Frontier will also.
Would, would there be a way to use ARPA money to try to, and have that money available so they could try to get the grant, and if they don't get the grant, then we can try to work it into budget for next year? To make, to make sure we have the money available? Is there, is there restrictions? I can't remember.
There's not now, with the new funding.
Oh, that's just an idea. If, if, if you could use that and for you to be able to get the grant, but if you don't get the grant, then we could back up and look at it.
We don't know what our odds are of getting the grant. As Pam said, the last cycle was only in three counties, a handful of counties. So if we, if we're based upon that, our odds are probably pretty low. I'm hoping that maybe what sets aside is that we are from southwest Virginia. Most of the focus has been on northern Virginia. I'm hoping that will maybe, maybe help us out a little bit. We'll see.
Hopefully, yeah.
I think we need to research.
Of course, I don't want to say that. We do have a committee, of course, five of us is here. But just word of advice, just an idea.
I do have a question. If they do fund this $10,000 in June, do you have an account for VA 250 that that could be deposited into, or does it run through tourism?
We've not figured any of this out.
Yeah, we obviously need to establish that. We, I mean, we had a conversation about this in our meeting yesterday. We were here discussing that. And we were talking about needing to establish some of these items. Again, we're behind the gun on trying to catch up, knowing this grant period's running out. We're trying to get, just basically catch up as fast as we possibly can. So we will have to establish, you know, the treasury perspective of these funds, correct?
Could be just a line item in the Scott County budget, or does it have to?
Well, the budget ends June. That's why I was asking, because if it went to VA 250, you know, we would write a check. It would be deposited, but if it stays in your budget, we would have to put it in the '24 budget as a line item to carry it forward.
I can tell you, we've got a dedicated group of individuals. Whatever we've got to do, we'll make it happen. So maybe we can also partner with you guys and get some of that leadership in direction, if that'd be okay, to help us out. However it needs to be done, we'll do whatever needs to be done to make it happen. So we're excited about what this will be doing and celebrating, bringing to the county. So we'll make it happen, whatever we've got to do.
All right. Well, Seattle, excited.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Next item is the Thomas Village Community Center, Lace. We have someone here from Thomas Village. Next item is the Public Service PSA Bond Closing. Mr. Dishman. There you are.
Want me to come up?
Yeah, come on up top of this. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. It's waiting for y'all to sing "Happy Birthday" to you.
Happy birthday.
Appreciate you. Go ahead and discuss with us while we got going on.
My wife.
I'm trying to bail you out here.
My wife hasn't called me yet. I don't know.
No, how's I am?
Okay, come in later.
Yeah. I couldn't resist. It's Flag Day.
This is bond closing. This is a normal thing you all do for a bond closing, for a loan. It's the Duffield, it's the improvement, Phase Two Improvement Project at our Duffield wastewater plant. $400 and some thousand in run. And then we got a significant amount of grant for that, too. So they require the board supervisors to support it.
It's something we do all the time on these bond financing options they have that ESA does, so we need to do it and get you all in line where you can continue getting water to repeat it. This is Phase Two at Duffield, right? You said?
Yes, sir. Improvement, our improvement plan, yes.
Do you have the total amount, so we can, for the record?
I don't have it.
$400 and some thousand, you said?
You have that, Sally. $413.
In the support agreement that you all are approving?
Sorry.
$413,475?
Yes.
And you're approving the support agreement, as far as I know. I tried to find out from them yesterday, but they didn't write me back, so.
Yeah, we have a new guy working on that, new attorney.
Anyway, to approve this bond, the amount that Miss Kayla gave us. Anyway, to approve this bond, the amount that Miss Kayle gave us, uh, I said, we've got to do this, it's something that needs to happen before the PSA. So we entertain a motion to approve, approve this bond. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair.
Miss Hood made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
You're second, any discussion?
The support agreement is what you're agreeing on?
The support agreement is. All right, we have a motion, second. I'll, for example, say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Don't let too painful with it.
That was good. Thanks for the, for the wish.
So, one question. How old are you?
Well, I'm, I think I'm a lot younger than, than those people my age. I'm sixty.
All right, you stay where you're at. The next item is the PSA, the resolution that we had presented to us. We have it in your packet. So any discussion on that for you and Trish?
Um, yes, the PSA, well, as I've talked with you before, we have had a, um, some difficulty in obtaining easements. In particular for sewer projects. We're trying to do the Hiltons, Yuma Sewer Project and the Daniel Boone Sewer Project. Daniel Boone is under construction. Uh, but we've had a lot of success getting easements. But with sewer projects, if you have a few holdouts on easements, it can really mess up, you know, your project. And it's led to years of delays and, um, and then, um, cost overruns due to the inflation that we ran into following COVID. Um, we got the funding that we need now for Hiltons and Yuma, but we needed a new strategy to get the easements. And, um, we needed to add a, a tool to our toolbox, if you will, to give us another method of obtaining easements. And, um, and so we want to be able to use everything available to us provided by the Code of Virginia to get easements. And, um, so we will, if the PSA board approved this, and so we just seek endorsement of the board supervisors in this new effort. So we will start a new procedure. We would, if given the approval, we would start a new procedure to get easements. It was, uh, the goal is to speed things up, so. But the, but the, the focus that I want to bring is that the PSA, um, the projects that we are trying to do bring a great benefit to the public and, uh, public health, um, safety, um, economic development. And in order to do these projects, we have to have easements. So we've got to have easements to be able to provide these public benefits. And we have success with ninety percent, ninety-five percent of the folks, property owners. It's just a few that we need a little help with.
I need to, to allow the PSA to use the, the legal, um, means necessary to get these easements still. So do we have a motion to, to allow the PSA to do this?
Okay.
Mr. Jude made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ricky's second, any discussion? I'll, for example, say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with it.
If you ever need anything from me or any questions, please contact me. I mean, thank you.
Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you.
Next item is the Personal Property Relief Act. Thirty-one percent discount on people with their vehicles, the $20,000 stuff. You've read that in the, in the resolution. Uh, we do this every year, so we need a motion to approve this, uh, resolution. Do we have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Mr. Sherman made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Tipton's second, any discussion? I'll, for example, say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. We tabled you to the next time, if you want to come on, we'll, we'll get to you now with, uh, the church stuff, right?
Yes.
We'll put you back on here. I got you delayed the next month, but come on forward.
Come on forward, yeah. Sean, Sean's here, he's, he went to the, uh, sorry, we're late, uh.
Okay.
It's just one little more. But, uh, good morning, everybody. And thank you so much for giving us the opportunity, once again, to come before you and talk to you about the, the Thomas Village Community Center.
I know you're, but go ahead, say your name.
My name's Jim Gates, and Sean, Pastor Sean Bailey will be here right shortly. And, uh, uh, what we want to do is, we want to ask you if you would be willing to renew the lease again for another year, uh, with, with our church, so that we can continue on keeping the Thomas Village Community Center a viable and active facility. Uh, and as I think most of you know, and for the benefit of those who don't, uh, we, there, we have activities going on there in that, in that building. And it, uh, it's in a whole lot better shape than it was, and we got a hold of it. I can tell you that several years ago. Uh, it's a decent, it's a really nice venue now. We have the Duffield Jam there, uh, which we call it the Larry Pravat Memorial Duffield Jam, because Mr. Pravat was the, the, actually, he was the one that got it all rolling. And he passed away, so we've named it in his, in honor of him as a memorial. But we have a jam session there on the first, third, and fifth Thursdays of each month. If there happens to be a fifth Thursday. And if there is a fifth Thursday, the fifth Thursday is an all gospel jam. And we, and it's open to all levels of musicianship. And, uh, for, at one time, we had, we were having about fifty folks there each time we had it. Of course, COVID really put the kibosh on us really bad, and we lost a lot. We were slowly working our way back up. Right now, we, I would say we average about anywhere from twenty-five to forty in there, uh, uh, folks there. The number of musicians that come to Pickers is a consistent number. There's usually always at least ten there. And, uh, so, in, in the crowd. But we have started, as a result of COVID, we, when we did start back, we didn't have food. People would bring food and stuff. We, we've reinstituted that. You know, food always brings folks out. So it's beginning to pick back up. Let's see. Sean, come on up here. What was the other thing? This is Sean Bailey, our pastor of Three Bells. And we got here late, Sean. We was chewing the fat on the way down here too much, I guess. But, uh, uh, I, I wanted to mention about the, Mr. Hartley here, that I've been talking to him about the possibility, we might try to get Heritage TV to do some filming of our events. I've said this has been going on for a number of years, and I don't know how many it is, but it's getting, it's, it's been eight or nine years, I think, that we've been doing it, maybe more. I can't remember, I lose track of time. But there was another thing that I was talking about, besides, and he don't remember either. But anyway, uh, of course, uh, we have another church services that held our Journey Church. Uh, hold services in that structure all the same, at the same time, Three Bells was holding their service. And they have, I think, some, the first Wednesday, they have a Wednesday, they have a nighttime service as well. And I don't know their schedule, so I can't really address it. But those folks do so much to clean and keep that place sparkling. I, I would urge anybody, all of you, to come and see what the county has, that you didn't even know you had. Most of you didn't never know. I mean, most of you have never seen that building. It was, it's a tremendous structure. It was built in the seventies, and it would, it had been dormant until, uh, eight or nine years ago, when Three Bells got involved in, in trying to make use of it. And it's something that the county can be proud of right now. We've been proud to be stewards of it. It's, it's been a good thing. Oh, I know what it was now, the other good thing I was going to, to give you an example of, of the, what the benefits are for the county. Uh, one of the musicians that attends regular, bass player, comes every week. He is involved with the Christian Church in this town, city of Norton. And, uh, he, he approached the regular Pickers and said, you know, our church is holding a benefit for first responders to be benefit next Saturday. And I was wondering if y'all would come up and play. And we had everybody but two regulars. So we had eight musicians up on stage from Duffield Jam. And, uh, all the folks, the first responders up there were, were really happy that, that we were there. And it was a wonderful, yeah, church event. And so, anyway, uh, that's a little good pub PR for Scott County, so. And with all that said, and Sean, I've done ratchet jodding to death here. Uh, if you've got anything you would like to ask of them, we would ask for y'all to renew our lease.
We're just grateful for you all for allowing us to, to lease the building, uh, previously as you've done. And in times past, Frontier Hills used the building, or whomever made it. We've made it available. Scouts, just whomever, and we're happy to do that and happy to be stewards of it. So thank y'all for your consideration, it's wonderful.
What time are your?
Six, six, stuff begins at six, and we say till eight, but. We, we never, we never quit at eight, or at least we haven't yet. It's most, but, but most of the time, we're out there by around nine.
What date?
First, third, and fifth Thursdays. It's Thomas Field Community Center, that's 955 Cecil Dequillan Drive.
Y'all went by, a couple of months ago, got pictures of it, we were looking at it. And so, I don't know, I'm gonna come back to the jam session, I love it. I go to Allen Hicks all the time, I like those. Is it bluegrass music or any kind of music?
It's any kind of music, but primarily because we, we, we're primarily classic country and gospel.
Okay.
I mean, but we, we have, you know, there's a little, there's a little of everything. But, uh, most, most of the venues of that nature, that's nature in our area are bluegrass. So we wanted something that was, you know, uh, maybe just a little bit different. But we certainly, all types of music are welcome. And, and all levels. And we, we really encourage people to come, especially the ones that are wanting to learn or whatever. We have sometimes, once, not as often as it used to, but we used to have really young people come. And we'd get them, I'd be get them involved in it. But we have, we have, just recently, we've got a little girl from over Lee County that comes and performs for us. Sometimes she's eight or nine, I think. So we, we try to get involved in it as much as we can.
All right. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Can we entertain a motion after the lease in front of you? The amount is still one dollar?
It is.
Okay. So the amount's still one dollar, we leased that to them. And, uh, so need a motion to approve this lease agreement with Three Bells at the Thomas Village Community Center lease. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion when we renew the lease.
Mr. Hood made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton's second, any discussion? I'll, for example, say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Does anyone need to sign this?
Yeah, so, do you have your motor? Yes.
Call and bid in back to order. Next item is items 17, Duffield Days Request. Do we have anyone here who wants to speak on that?
We have that on your tablet. They sent in a letter requesting a thousand dollars to help with the Duffield Days event.
Okay. Come from our contingency fund?
Yes.
Sure, all right. Need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hood made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Miss Aitken's second, any discussion? I'll, for example, say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is some ARPA projects, Ms. Snorr.
We have one project for you to consider. Uh, you have the information on your tablet. Uh, it's for the Civic Clerk, which is an agenda and meeting, minute management solution. Uh, that cost is eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars.
That's it?
Yes, the only one this time.
Our motion to approve this amount for a civic clerk, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Judy's second, any discussion? I'll, for example, say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Hold it, man.
Eight thousand, six thirty-six.
Next item is our bookkeeping, Ms. Brick.
Please appropriate $2,476.63 Commonwealth Attorneys Conference Travel, 221-00-5510 for reimbursement received in deposits at the Treasurers Office. Appropriate $134,250 to Capital Projects Radio Equipment Loan, 95000-8026 for reimbursement received. And that is all of the appropriations.
All right. Need a motion on appropriation? Do we have a motion?
So, Mr. Sherman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Judy's second, any discussion? I'll, for example, say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And please accept DEQ FY23 Competitive Litter Prevention and Recycling Grant. And if accepted, please appropriate $5,500 to the Established Budget Code Litter Control DEQ Grant Supplies, 35200-6003 for monies received in deposits at the Treasurers Office. And accept Sheriff's Office DCJS SRO Incentive Grant Program, 507934-FY24 Grant, 24-927-D at $344,814. And accept Sheriff's Office DCJS SRO Incentive Grant Program, 507934-FY24 Grant, 24-211-B at $285,963. And accept Sheriff's Office 508516-LARPA Law Enforcement and Equipment Grant, 509778 at $478,000.
Do we have a motion on accepting the grants? Do we have a motion? I'll, for example, motion. Mr. Brick made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton's second, any discussion? I'll, for example, say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is appointments, Mr. Stan, if you would.
You have one appointment to the Recreation Advisory Board District One. You have one applicant in your extra folder, and that is Wally Ford.
Send application somewhere.
It's right in the back.
I got a couple of records here. All right. Do we have any nominations for the Recreation Advisory Board?
I'll nominate Y Ford.
Any other nominations?
Make a motion, nomination ceases, vote by acclamation.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. I'll, for example, say an aye. Aye, opposed, Regional Library Board, Mr. Stan.
Rebecca Scott has been serving in this position, and she did reapply. Her application is on your tablet.
Any nomination for the Launch of Pine Regional Library Board?
Nominate Rebecca Scott.
Okay. Any other nominations? Entertain a motion, nomination ceases, vote by acclamation, do we have?
So moved.
Who said that?
Me.
Miss Stan made a motion.
Nomination ceases with the acclamation.
Yeah. Have a second.
I'll second.
Sharon's second, I'll, for example, say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next is the Southwest Community Corrections Criminal Justice Board. Ms. Snorr has been serving on that. Do we have any nominations?
One, I'm like Ms. Snorr.
Any other nominations?
Make a motion, nomination ceases, vote by acclamation.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, second, any discussion? I'll, for example, say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next one is the Plaid District Form Behavioral Health Services Board. Do we have any nominations? Any application on that, Karen?
You have a letter from Lana Mullins. She, she's who wanted to serve on that.
Do we have any nominations?
I don't have any, Lana Mullins.
Okay, any other nominations?
I'll make a motion, we, nomination ceases, and we vote by acclamation.
All righty. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Judy's second. I'll, for example, say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is the County Attorney Islands, Ms. Kegler.
I have one thing, I'm happy to answer any questions, but the one thing is regarding the Evans Ford Campground. They, the White, David and Jennifer White, need an easement across the county property to access another part of their parcel where the campground can be. It's an ingress egress easement. And to do that, if you all choose to, we need to have a public hearing. So I'm asking for authority to advertise that public hearing for July.
Okay. All right, need a motion to allow Ms. Kegler to pursue this? Do we have a motion?
I'm, I'm, go ahead. I'll make a motion.
Miss Hood made a motion. Do we have a second? Miss Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
And I'll second.
Ms. Sanders, second, all right. All fair and open, say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item, County Administrator Islands, claims, Ms. Barnes.
The general fund balance as of today after claims is twelve million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and three cents. As you can see on comparison chart, that's quite a bit above where we were this time last year, and that is because we are waiting on a four-point-eight million dollar invoice that will be paid out of that for the school system. So, your claims, you had early claims for the month that totaled two hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-one cents. Current claims are two hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and twenty cents. Some of the larger ones for the month were Adco for fuel for April and May, twenty-eight thousand, four forty-nine, thirty-one. Glass machinery for the April and May rental of the loader for the transfer station, we do have ours back now, so that rental amount was ten thousand, five hundred dollars. Mosley Architects for A and E Services through May thirty-first, seventy-three hundred and eighty dollars. Southwest Virginia Criminal Justice Academy, that's the twenty-three, twenty-four fees for the academy in Bristol for E nine-one-one and the Sheriff's Office, twenty-two thousand, two forty-eight. Tyler Technology, sixteen thousand, nine seventy-eight, sixty-seven, that's for our MUNIS conversion, and Waste Management for May was forty thousand, five seventy-seven, ninety-seven. So, total claims for the month, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-one cents.
Is that Waste Management up quite a bit?
It's more than last month. I think last month was thirty-four thousand, but we've been in the forty thousand range frequently.
People spring cleaning, though. I'll tell you something, I don't know.
That's what I did. I did.
I think most of that was due, so.
I spring cleaned.
It adds to the.
They're full every day, they're up and they come by swimming, they're as full as swimming. These have to close the gates earlier because they're running over about four or five o'clock. I'm working.
And people get frustrated, they go up the gates closed, but what do you do? I mean, it feels like you gotta close them, because they end up on the ground.
Round it up.
Yep, so, anyway.
Yes, one of these.
All right, any discussion before we approve? If not entertained a motion, do we pay the bills?
I'll make the motion, we pay the bills.
All right. Ms. Hare made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Jeter, second, any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. On that, where we're at now, the twelve minutes, I pulled down four.
Still easy.
Yeah, still easy. L seven, almost eight million, and so, we're still being as better than what we were this time last year, anyway. Next item is the July third, July third event for the county. Ms. Barnes, we can discuss this if you want to. Discuss it around any one.
Go ahead.
I talked to Ms. Barnes about the fourth following of Tuesday and give employees July the third as additional holiday, and I think that's, that's a good idea to do that. A lot of people, give them a four-day weekend and probably you're gonna leave time up anywhere or something to take that day off. So, anyway, I do recommend that we give this extra holiday to the county employees and whoever it would affect, I don't know, but anywhere for the county employees, give an extra day off. Your all thoughts on this, if we should or should not?
Will the trash places be closed?
That's what I was gonna ask. They'll be closed July fourth.
Be down today, so they'll be open the third.
All righty.
I was just wondering, if you're running out of ears?
Yeah, yeah, just the fourth, because the landfills close that day, and that's why those major holidays that our sites are closed, because we can't haul the trash and we can't leave it on the transfer floor.
Are you not allowed to leave any of the floor?
No.
Didn't realize that.
Yeah, we get in trouble for that.
If we come to landfilling against if you do. All right. Any other thoughts? If not entertained a motion to approve this extra holiday for the county employees, do we have a motion? Mr. Jeter made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second, any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item, the next, the July meeting comes on the fifth, which is a day after the fourth, of course, and so, anyway, the meeting date might need to move to the twelfth reason being the MUNIS, new computer system goes into effect July first, and to give them some time to acclimate everything to that new system.
July the twelfth or July fourteenth?
The July the twelfth. Didn't waste it the twelfth. And so, anyway, the meeting date to change then, your all thoughts on doing that?
Probably gone, but they don't matter.
What's that, that one monkey don't do something, so?
That's right, one monkey don't roll up the train. Y'all were right on it.
I had to throw that at you, I could have. All right, so, anyway, I think we should go to July the twelfth with that, if we entertain a motion to approve this, the July twelfth meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Hare made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bricky, second, any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye. Aye, opposed. Something we need to do, there was some issues last Wednesday, some folks showed up, I think. Our cameraman David been one of them, so, anyway, we need to post that out so people know it won't be on July the fifth and get out, get the word out by word of mouth, website, wherever, so people know not to be here on July the fifth.
It wasn't dated on the website for this time as well.
Wasn't? I thought it probably was, I looked at it, but I assumed it probably was, but anyway, but if we can do that. Next item is the Nicholsville Farmers Market, Jeremy, you wanna take the lead on this?
Yeah, we've decided, I spoke with the town council of Nicholsville Monday, they've got a vacant lot beside of the fire hall. They've actually got pretty big plans for that lot. We've decided to put, let Nicholsville have, have sort of control of building that building and let them put that up, and there's, they've already got a farmer's market started, so they're already in the process and on track of what needs to be done, so a building will just help that. Twenty-five thousand of that's gonna come from a grant that John Kilgore through the EDA was able to get, and the twenty-five thousand dollar match will be coming from the ARPA funds, so they'll be getting fifty thousand dollars, and that, that should build a pretty, pretty nice building. I think there, there, there does need to be some sort of a, I won't say contract, but just in wordage saying, you know, what's, what's going on with that building. Nicholsville needs to have sort of the basic control, that's gonna be their building, to be able to take, take care of that building, of course, get it built, all that. There does need to be a restriction on it, though, that it has to be a farmer's market first, you know, as long as time permits. You know, I, they, they'll just have to provide a time, and like I said, they've already got a set time for, for that, so I would think they would just funnel that right in. But, but, but the grant was for being able to provide fresh food to a locality. The grant was written for Nicholsville, not, not necessarily the town of Nicholsville, we could have put it wherever, but that, that lot's gonna be a good place, a whole lot less work grade-wise, and they were a hundred percent for it. The only restriction was the, they just wanna make, make sure, you know, that it, especially the funding will be streamlined, because they've only got till, I think, May of next year to get it, get it finished, so, so if we could put something in writing, whatever we need to do there, Sally.
Yeah, I think it's between the EDA and.
Okay. So, so John, okay.
Yeah, John will take care of that.
Okay, all right. But other than that, that's, that should be basically the deal, hopefully be able to get that out.
Jeremy worked hard on that, and I, I mean, you have, you've been right in the middle of that and found every way you could, so it's appreciated from the county aspect of it, and the town leadership too, that you have worked hard on that to secure the funding for all that.
Well, it'll be a, it'll be a county build, you know, even though it is in, I mean, you know, it'll be in town, you know, they'll, they'll sort of oversee it, I guess, but it, it'll be a good, good thing for the entire county, for local farmers, the smaller farmers to be able to sell, you know, their product.
I'm just curious, will we be an open, kind of like Russell County?
Yeah, that's, that's the original, you know, of course, these, these buildings, you know, you can add on to them, you can enclose them later on, you know, and I'm, I'm sure this building may change in the next few years, maybe have it to maybe where there's a place maybe for refrigerators, maybe, you know, and, and, and maybe not, but yeah, it'll be something like the one Russell County's got, just an open, open building right, right now, not hardly as big, because there's not enough room, but.
Well, I think that's great, and it's right beside of Teddy's where the, the farmer's market is?
Yeah, beside the fire hall, but yeah, you, you have Teddy's, the fire hall, and then a vacant lot, you know, there's just a grass lot there. And like I say, they've, they've got, and I'm not gonna speak for them, they've got big plans for that lot, they, they're gonna do some improvements, and that, that, that building should just, it should fit right into what they're wanting to do, so.
Good job.
That's, that's why they need to sort of have control, because they know what that lot needs to look like, and they want the building to match the lot, so that's, that's the best, best.
That's good, yeah.
Good job on that.
Yeah, very good job on it, appreciate what you've done on it. All right.
Is that gonna be a one-day farmer's market? Do you want to have a whole day?
Well, see, that, that, that can change too. Right, right now, I think it's on Saturdays, and I'm, it's, it's like one to five or something like that, but, you know, we're sort of gonna leave that up, you know, they have a town committee too, you know, that, that's, that's another good thing. We've already got somebody in place that's, that's willing to make it happen, and they can sort of morph that throughout the years, you know, if they, you know, maybe during the summertime, you know, maybe eventually they can have it two days a week. I know Russell County has theirs on Wednesdays and Saturdays, but, you know, it's, it'll just be a work in progress, you know, they'll play it by ear, yeah.
All right, appreciate it. Are we down to miscellaneous items, anything?
I don't have anything else.
All right, we, we do have one item for close session, we'll talk about a few minutes. The first, will you, or closing comments, Mr. Jeter, you have anything?
I'm good. Thanks staff for all the hard work and the board.
Yeah, Mr. Tipton?
I would just take over what Mr. Jeter said. I also wanna mention, I don't, I'm not sure if this is where we need to do this or not, but I think there needs to be a discussion on the BOS salary, and I guess we're gonna do the closed about the.
The pay scale.
Pay scale. Do you wanna have that discussion now, or you wanna do this on the twenty-eighth, or how, how we wanna do this?
I don't know.
I believe in being open and transparent about it, so you wanna do that?
Sure.
Okay.
But we're going to close session on the pay scale stuff, so.
Okay, was it, you wanted, you wanted to include that with it, or?
No, we, we can't talk about it in the close on, on the board salary, but we can, but the pay scale.
That, that was my question.
So, are you wanting to do all the budget changes now instead of the twenty-eighth? On the list that's in your packet, do you wanna discuss all of those today, then?
Let's, let's wait, we got.
Let's wait till the twenty-eighth, my.
That's the final approval, we'll do it that day.
And what about the board?
That, that's one of the items.
Yeah, the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Any things? Mr. Herron, have you?
Appreciate what everybody does. I, I need to probably backtrack a little bit. I may have jumped again a little bit last meeting. We found out that, and I, I should have checked on this before I opened my mouth, but we would have to appoint somebody to my position. We, they would have to go through the entire process of what we went through the very first thing, and that's, that's, that's gonna be a, just more work on, on the county. So, I, I'm not gonna resign, but I still won't be here starting in September, the meetings. But I still do have some open requests with BDOT, so I'll, I'll still be able to work and hopefully get, get some more things completed. I just won't be able to be at the meetings on Wednesdays.
Are you free in the evenings, or?
I, I am, but, you know, I, I, I thought about that, you know, the people have sort of gotten used to the meetings being at eight-thirty. I know, you know, I'm, I'm sure all of us has got complaints about, you know, it's up at the first thing in the morning, why don't you have it in the evening? But there's not really a good time, I don't think, you know, if, if we moved it, just, I don't, I don't think we need to do that unless, you know, there's just something major.
What about like the last meeting we had?
Oh, in December?
Yeah, that you could be present for our last meeting.
That's, that's a, I, I just don't wanna cause any confusion.
We can discuss it, you know, I'm on my, myself, I'll just go ahead, so that you could be at our last meeting.
Well, and, and, you know, things have worked, worked out the way they have, and that's, you know, starting in September, I'll be busy, and, you know, the committees, I'm not on nowhere near as committees as what you all are, I'm only on two or three, three, I think.
But they're important?
They, they are.
They're important, but.
You know, that, that, you, you'd have to fill that spot, so, you know, it, I'll still be able to be at those except for one, and that's, that's something I had yesterday, the C, CPMT Committee. That's, that's ba- basically dealing with the foster care kids, you know, here in the county, you know, I, I don't talk about that much because probably about ninety-eight percent of it I can't talk about, you know, because it's dealing with kids from birth to basically twenty-one years old, you know, and the state puts a lot of money towards that, the county puts a lot of money towards that. I think the budget last year for that was like, I'm gonna round it, about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that goes toward the foster kids, and while, what, what is getting at there, I, I brought that up yesterday, and they seem to think it, it may be possible that I can appoint somebody to be there, especially if they don't have a corps. That's, that sometimes, you know, over the last three, three and a half years, that's been a problem, you know, we, we may not have a corps. So, if, if, if we find out that we can do that, that may be something we need to do before September. And just, just in case, you know, you, you, because you don't wanna put the kids in hardship type, you wanna try to get that funding out to them as fast as possible, and while we're talking about it, Mr. Bricky can probably talk, talk about it too, you know, foster care here in the county, you know, for the younger kids, you know, from birth to, let's say, seven, eight years old, it's fairly simple to get a family to take those, but if, if there's somebody out there that's willing to take, you know, some of the older kids, you know, twelve, the teenagers, that, that is a need for our county, you know, there's, it's, it's very hard to find placement for those kids, so if there's anybody out there willing to do that, you need to get ahold of Social Services, and they can point you in the right direction and give you some training about it and information, but that's, that's very, very important that we take care of our kids. So, is it, is everybody good with that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right.
That's all gone, appreciate y'all.
To him saying, being involved in that, so many people believe that all this board does sit here and have a couple hours meeting, there's much more stuff goes on away from this meeting room. And the boards I serve on and all of you, even right now, Marshall, he's chairman of the Lenoiscos Board, and, and Mike, he serves on it, I serve on it, the act of the board, and you was president for a while there, and I sell myself, there's so many other things that this board supervisors does, that I don't think really people realize, like you've been involved so much in that, getting that farmer's market in Nicholsville and how much, how time-consuming that was, and so, anyway, it's a lot of stuff that just happens with this board that people never see, the only thing they see is when they get that tax ticket for no government plan, that's all they see. So, anyway. So anyway.
That's true.
But anyway, just much appreciate what you've, what you've served, your community, and what you've, I, I thank you for staying on. All right. Mr. Brickley.
All I've got to say is it was good to see this big crowd here this morning, like you said, and it was good to see them. Appreciate all of you. And that's it.
I said what I want to say, it's just the good, the staff, and like I said, I wish people would come. I mean, I don't, I do want people to come and see what's going on. They can watch it on YouTube, or watch it, you know, on Heritage TV, but, you know, to be here and have your questions answered, and I thank the staff here, Ms. Starne, Sally, whoever, you know, does what they have to do, that they're required to do, and they do it well, so we're very blessed to have them.
Yes.
We really are. All righty. Ms. Hood.
I agree. I was pleased to see so many people come who were involved in the county business. Man, that's alive.
Thank you. Ms. Addington.
I think the staff for everything they've done, and, you know, I do want to mention that on 72, between Dungannon and Coburn, we have seen a, if you follow Scanner Food, then you see a lot of the current, the tractor trailer drivers that are getting stuck, and the GPSs are obviously taking them the wrong way, and, you know, they, or, or something, I don't know if they, I don't know what the complete issue behind all that is. But I did reach out to VDOT and ask the question about, you know, is there anything else that, you know, they could do from their side that, you know, to help mitigate this, because obviously it's once a day, sometimes, and sometimes it's, you know, a couple times a week that we're seeing tractor trailer drivers get stuck, and then it closes the roads and things like that, but we did, Joey did respond back, and, you know, they have put up signs, and what he did encourage us to, to do is to reach out to the local law enforcement from both Scott County and Wise County, which I'm not, I didn't do Wise County, but we did send that note on to, to Major Starne at the Sheriff's Office here, so that they can hopefully deter that situation in the future by, you know, it is posted, it is posted, no trucks over 30 foot, I think is the, is what the sign says. So hopefully, hopefully that, you know, we can get that area patrolled and issue citations for those people that are failing to comply with the law. I mean, that's, that's the issue right there, right?
They have installed that sign this morning. I sent it yesterday, somebody said they had put it up. It's a, one of those run, run from the generator, it's a lighted sign right there, issued next to the rescue squad buildings in Dungannon this morning, so tell them not to go, take the truck route, which is north on 65. So there's a lighted sign there now that's operating, so hopefully that will help some, but anyway, somebody said there've been 14 trucks this year that has got stuck up there. One of them was wrecked, I mean, the guy was, was on the wrong side of the road, you have to be, you can't, you can't negotiate those curves.
No.
If you don't, you have to. The trailer's up on the wrong side of the road, and this, and the guy ran under his truck, and so anyway, it was.
It's a hazard. I mean, it just creates a hazard for everybody.